Chief has said that he's fine with it. So, I don't, I, you know, it's, it's one of those things where Billy submits the bill and whatever the amount is, half of it comes back from the state. I think the chief said that a lot of that is coming out of his own payroll, out of the fire department payroll. He since talked to Kim and Kim said that she would reimburse his portion of the payroll back into his account. That's not normally the way it's done, but that's the way we're doing it because the chief is paying for it.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have to comment on that.
Okay.
The fire department has been paying that payroll for the last 32 years.
Yep.
When Chief Baker was warden and when I was warden.
Yep.
So there shouldn't be any problem with it.
I think what happened was in the beginning, the chief was concerned that the guys that were going out to fight the fires were making less than what their hourly rate as a firefighter was, so.
This is true. I don't, it's hard enough to get guys to go out to forestry calls now.
Right.
If you start paying them the state rate, you'll get nobody.
Right, exactly. So that's why I think he was paying for it because he wanted to give them more money than the state would allow.
Like I said, we, the chiefs have been paying for it for 32 years. So I don't, I don't understand the comment that was made in the meeting minutes under forest fire bill that says TA Regley stated that she learned today that firefighters were paid out of fire department payroll and not forest fire payroll.
That's correct, I did.
But after, okay.
And I know Bill, but the fire, the fire depart, the state does not pay high enough rates and the fire chief wanted to pay them more money, so he's paying it out of their budget, but he's only, but only get credited.
I know that. We've been doing it for years.
I agree.
Because of that.
I agree.
So I, I guess my main question is, are the, are the firefightings getting, firefighters getting paid what they're supposed to be getting paid?
From the fire department, I believe so.
Yeah, so they're, they're not getting undercut by us or anything. So it's a matter of what bucket it comes out of, right?
Well, the reimbursement from the state isn't as much as we're paying out.
Yeah.
So whatever we get half of from the state goes back in to offset his budget.
Yeah.
And what's the other half get used for?
We only get half.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Just for an, just for an example, I don't know what firefighters are getting paid today, but according to the state, they're only, if you pay them that hourly rate, they're only getting $12.53 an hour.
And I believe the fire chief is paying them their hourly rate at the fire station, which is more.
That would be good.
Yeah, because he said if he didn't, they wouldn't have anybody responding.
This is true too.
Right.
The member, a lot of the members don't like forest fires, they never have.
Yeah, I could see that.
Wasn't the concern just that they would get double paid or that they, or something to that effect? I don't, I don't think he was objecting to us being reimbursed. I think he was just concerned that, you know, the firefighters would only get paid the amounts on those sheets, or he didn't want to do it because, hey, they've already been paid, I'm not signing this so they get paid again kind of thing.
They don't get paid, they don't get paid again. That money comes back to the town and the town decides what to do with it.
The way it was normally done is the, Billy has a fire depart, he has a forest fire budget, that's where the salary always got paid out of. But because they don't get paid as much using the state rate, the fire chief decided to pay them their hourly rate out of his budget. He wanted to make sure that money was going back into his budget. Whatever we get from the state goes back to offset his budget of payroll.
Yeah, and I have no problem with that.
Right. And that's why the chief doesn't have an issue with this and, and said he didn't need to be on this call.
Okay.
So.
So that sounds good to me.
Yep.
Anything else that we want to talk about on this subject, or do you think we're good for tonight?
I think you need to make a motion to sign it, correct Nancy?
Yes.
I think so, we didn't do that last time.
All right, I move to sign the forestry bill. Fill in the blanks, Diane, with the date and amount.
Yeah. Somebody want to second Lisa? Seconded by Kate. I don't think there's any more discussion, so let's go around the horn. So Charlie, how do you vote?
Charlie, star six.
How about Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie, are you back?
Yep, I'm an aye.
And Matt, that's unanimous. All right, Bill, are you all set with us?
I'm all set, just, uh, I will drop off some more info in regards to procedure for paying the, these bills. I'll drop it off in the drop box tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
You too.
Bye. All right, so Diane, I think Mr. Conley's in the waiting room.
I don't see.
Is he in the?
He's in the room, I sent him.
Is he in a different waiting room? So there's nobody in the waiting room?
No, I don't see anyone in the waiting room.
I'm here, Matt.
Oh, thank God, thank goodness.
I'm sure.
I was afraid we wouldn't have anybody to present anything. Do you have his number Diane? Mike's number?
Um, I don't know if I do, I'll have to check.
If, if, let me text you it and then, are you here? Are you here, Mike?
I am, I am, but not.
You're not on Zoom?
I'm on Zoom, it says, "Meeting hasn't started," so I don't know if there's a technical issue, but I have my slides that I can walk you guys through, if that works for you.
Uh, let's do this, Diane, can you text Mike the proper link for Zoom?
Which is, which one is he? What number are you, Mike?
I can't Zoom, I can't Zoom, I'm in my truck driving.
No, the other Mike.
This is Mike.
I don't know what Mike you're looking for, all right.
Okay, we'll, we'll call you Mr. Povero tonight, but only tonight.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to send it to a text message, or do you want to send it to my work email?
I believe I sent it to your work email.
I did, and I keep clicking on it, but it's telling me that the meeting hasn't started.
I know I had issues with it telling me it was an invalid meeting, so it wouldn't hurt to resend him the link, Diane?
I'm looking for it, hold on.
If I cut and paste it myself, it worked, but if I clicked it, it did not work.
Yeah, exactly, that was the problem I had too.
All right, let's, I want to do a quick one while we have some dead air here. So F we, F we took care of, E is lease agreement for new police cruiser, is that just a sign, Diane?
Uh, yeah, except it's, she's been having a little trouble getting it straightened out, but it's just to go on to the, you know, the, the new F-150 Cruiser.
Right.
Which is actually a pickup truck.
Right, which I believe the chief talked to us two weeks ago about.
Yes.
So, so I know we voted sort of in, in concept to go ahead with it, but what's the reason for it being on the agenda for tonight? Is there actual, is the lease agreement ready to be signed?
It will be tomorrow, she just has a couple more things to do.
Okay, so is the board comfortable with giving me the authorization to sign this lease agreement, or do they need?
Not a prob, not a problem.
I, I will move to authorize the chair to sign the lease for the new cruiser.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, let's go around, Larry, how do you vote? Aye. Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so I'll sign that in my normal weekly signing duties as I come in. We have, looks like D, we have a bond we can release.
Oh yeah, the road bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, um, Mike Povero, the road agent went down, checked it, and it is okay, and it's been a year now, so we can release that $5,000 road bond.
So we just need a motion to release, right?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Could you, could you give me a little bit of information, what transpired? I don't know.
So it's for Wilders Grove.
Right. Yeah. They had a septic failure, they had to dig a trench, so in order to dig a trench across the road, they had to open up a road permit, and then to do that, they needed a road bond of $5,000. That was done.
Okay, I'm all set, I understand that completely, not a problem. I didn't know what it was.
Sure.
All right.
Systems on one side of the road, the houses on the other.
So I move to authorize the release of the For Wilders Grove road bond.
Second.
All right, so we're gonna go around to vote, Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that's unanimous. Do we have, we don't have Mr. Conley in yet.
He's still on the phone, Mike, Michael, I sent it to you on your email.
Yep, it's, you know, Love Technology, it says, "When system dialogue prompts click Zoom, open Zoom meeting," but I'm not getting any prompts.
So what I, what I did is I had to actually punch it in to the Zoom connect, you know, I had to punch in 869-0753-6632, sort of the manual way, that seemed to work for me.
Let's see if, okay.
Uh, I want to talk quickly about the July meeting schedule. I'm just kind of picking the short ones while we have dead air here. So technically, our first meeting, or our next meeting, is the first meeting of the month of July, is July, is it sixth or seventh?
Seventh.
July 7th, so I believe Town Hall is closed the 6th, is that correct?
No.
No?
It's closed at all.
Really?
For the holiday?
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, we have floaters, that's right.
Is that what it is, a floater? So I know typically the board skips a July meeting. Did we want to do that this year?
I say yes, if nothing explodes.
True, yeah.
I mean, we've had so many meetings.
And we're still gonna have the meeting on the 8th.
Yeah, probably.
So I'm in agreement with only doing the 21st, other than to sign manifests when they're available, because that we'll need to do.
What's the Charlie thing?
Hi.
So we, we wouldn't have our normally scheduled first Tuesday in July meeting, and we'd just stick with our Wednesday COVID meeting that week and carry on from there.
Yeah, sounds good.
Larry, you good with that?
I'm good.
All right, and, and Diane, just so you know, and I'll, I'll talk to the board and the non-public, just discuss potentially having another June non-public, but I'll talk to you that offline, so it'll be a single subject, non-public.
Okay.
Ideally, so, but I'll get back to you on that, we get a check availability and stuff, so.
Yeah, quick question, we didn't seal the minutes.
Oh, good idea, Lisa, can you seal the minutes for me?
Yes, I move to seal the non-public minutes until such a time that the board deems it wise and prudent to no, not do so.
Seconded by Kate, any discussion?
Yeah, Matt, I have a question.
Yep.
Charlie, Charlie asked me, he wanted to read something, the non-public meetings that happened, I believe last month, it was denied because they were sealed. Can the selectmen still read them?
So, uh, let's, let's vote on this motion and then we'll discuss that, because this is just for tonight.
I'm an aye.
Okay.
I'm an aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. And why don't we come back to your question at the end of the meeting, Larry, because I think there's, we have to give it a little bit of discussion, but.
Okay, that's fine.
Don't let me forget.
Okay.
Thank you, and let's.
I've admitted him, he's got, Michael, Mike, you, Michael Conley, you have like three things here trying to join, okay, looks like you're getting rid of one of them.
Uh, I only got one up right now, I tried multiple times to get in.
All right.
It kept dropping.
Let me see if I can get you in this, again, it, it looks like it's, I think you ought to, oh, I'm not sure.
If Mike Povero's on the phone, can we deal with him so he can get off the phone?
I think so, yeah, I was just, because Mike Povero enjoys these meetings, so I wanted him to feel as though he could stay longer, but wanted to see how we did with Mr. Conley. So Mike Povero as the, why don't we go with Eastern Seaboard Construction update on the fire rescues, station sprinkler system, can you give us an update?
Yeah, I can. As of last Friday, actually last Wednesday, the technical checks and balances were done on the tanks. I ordered the tanks last Friday, it's four to six weeks before we see those, but those are underway and under production.
Hooray.
Great.
Finally, finally, finally.
Great.
So once we get closer to that delivery date and it gets confirmed, I'll mobilize to go out back and shut the fire station down, because the back part of that fire station won't be used for a long time. The whole, just to give you an idea, the hole that'll be up in the back of those apparatus doors will be 40 feet by 50 feet by about 10 feet deep.
Yep. Nice.
That sounds good, that's a, a big piece of progress right there.
Well, that starts, I mean, that finally starts the process of, you know, getting this done and getting the underground stuff done, and then the foundation and the building and so forth.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have to put in concrete foundations to hold them tanks in?
No, they're pre, no, they're pre, they're precast tanks, it's not a fiberglass tank, they're not gonna float.
Okay.
No, these are precast concrete, the, the bottom, the to, the total weight of each tank, and there's three tanks, is about 53,000 pounds, so we've got about 160,000 pounds of concrete going out back.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know, Mike, I'm just asking.
Yep.
Yep.
How many bags, how many bags of quick creep would that be?
Yeah, too many.
Yeah, that'd be a lot.
Yeah, about 12, about 12 tractor trailers.
Yeah, I would say so. All right, so are we good with that update, board?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Is there a, now that's the sprinkler system update, there's a, a letter B, Diane, estimate to redo some wiring in Bay Area?
Yeah.
In San Francisco?
No, I wish, no. My mouse won't move. So yes, there was an estimate that I sent out, it's in your things here, for, let's see, it's $625, and that's just to, there's some, why does that need to be redressed?
Yeah. So I know, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, when we first wired that, there was a, a case of there were some things we didn't know we'd need wiring for, and is that what this is all about, that the, because of a change in what we need in there, we need it rewired, is that essentially?
I don't think so, I think they just need to be, they, there's, I guess some kind of tape fell down, so they just need to be redressed, and the problem is that they, we need a lift, so.
Yeah, so it's not, not an easy thing.
Yeah.
So do we, go ahead, Charlie?
It was something about the wiring shot now, wasn't it?
No, not this.
Okay.
That was the, the, some kind of, this, the other system there, the access control system, to get in.
Okay, you have to get in now the building, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is just some, why is that, like I said, just need to be redressed.
Wish we could borrow, that's expensive.
Uh, so are we, where are we charging this to, I think is a question for the board?
Own buildings, right?
Or do we want to charge it to the project?
I wouldn't charge it to the project, Matt.
Yeah, me neither, I think government buildings is the more appropriate place.
Yep.
Okay, so anybody want to make that motion?
I, we can't go with the amount that's on the estimate though, because it does not include material, we need to have some kind of a buffer in there.
Do you want to, not to exceed 1,000?
I can do that, so I will move to authorize Kingston Electric to do the electrical work, not to exceed $1,000 for proposal number 3118.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion? Let's go around, Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so that one's unanimous. Mr. Povero, any, anything else under your name here? I don't.
Yeah, the only other item I have is a question the board asked me, if it wasn't last meeting, was the meeting before, in regards to Smith Corner Road, line striping and that whole topic.
Right, yep, go ahead, if you have any info.
Yeah, I do, I do, I'm gonna make it as brief as possible. So the research I did is in a couple different areas, the first one, I went down and checked some of the widths of, of Smith Corner Road, because some I redone since I've been road agent and others were done prior to my watch, and some I don't think have been done for a long time. And it'll vary, but the narrower spot that I could find was about 19 feet wide, maybe it tucked under 19 feet. Now that's important because based upon a couple manuals in the Bible, so to speak, is what they call the MUTCD manual, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is established by Federal Highway. And Smith Corner Road, like most roads in this town, would be low traffic rural Class 5 roads, which, without putting a traffic count on these roads, it's like less than 500 vehicles per day with a speed of less than 50 miles an hour. When you do striping on that classification, and that class road does not require striping because of the use of the road, but when you do it, you need to, at minimum, do two yellow lines, no single lines are permitted, so you've got a two yellow line separation down the center of the road, and that'll lead up 12 inches by itself, you got a four-inch line, a four-inch blank between them, and another four-inch line, so you've got 12 inches. You need a minimum of 10-foot travel lane, two travel lanes are 20 feet, so that's 21 feet. If you start adding fog lines to it, you're gonna add another foot to it, four inches and two inches off the edge of asphalt. So to do it with fog lines, you're 23 feet wide, to do it without fog lines, you're 22 feet wide, we have 19 feet, the math doesn't work. That's the first question that you guys asked me. The second question is cost, and I'm hoping we don't have to go through this exercise for a long time, but we'll see. This is my personal take, if we pursue Smith Corner Road, and to pursue that, I have to make the road wider in spots, so there's a cost associated with that, and I did not do any research on that right now. But let's say for conversation sakes, and it isn't, the road is wide enough. To line stripe Smith Corner Road, it's about 6,400 feet long, you'd be about $2,200 to do Smith Corner Road, but the fun doesn't start there, because as I sit here, pres, you know, in presenting this to you guys, I can assure you, this will not, not end there. Over the years, I get people from New Boston Road asking to line stripe that, I've got people in Palm Street to line stripe that, I've got people from Crane Crossing Road to line stripe that, and Hadley, I think has only come up once in the past 12 or 13 years, that's a pretty short road, and once Thornel is reconstructed, I can predict that they'll like that one line stripe. So not having a crystal ball, that total amount of road is 6.5 miles, which would be a total of 140,000 linear feet, or 26 miles of striping, which would be about $14,000, and that's every year. Now that $14,000 represents about 4.3% of my total budget. As I said when this was first brought up, I don't have the money to do this. Now if you guys decide to do it, you're obviously gonna have to increase the budget, buzz, budget to incur these costs, and me personally as road agent, if you're gonna increase my budget, you know, $14,000, I get other places I would much rather spend that. That's it in a nutshell.
I mean, I, you know, I would simply put it, this was, this was a concern from, I would say, a group of citizens for this, you know, if, if we got these concerns from other groups about their roads, I'd probably tell everybody the same thing, I'd probably say, "Do a petition, warrant article for it," I don't know what the board thinks about that.
That's a great idea.
I was thinking the same thing, Matt.
Why not?
You guys are just copying me.
No, we're not, Matt. No, we're not.
So.
Well, and that's not a bad, I mean, listen, that's not a bad idea, it gets, and I understand why you guys do that, it gets the board of selectmen out of the hot seat, and that's fine.
Sure does.
But what it does is, it allows the people to tell us what's most important to them. If we put it in the budget.
But Lisa, that's a, that's a mis, that's a misleading, that's a misleading situation, because it's, in like, some of these, right now, and I'll just be candid, this is a concern of Sergeant Woods, the residents in Sergeant Woods, and there's a lot of residents in there, and I get it, and is their concern unfounded? No, it's not. But, so how you gonna put a warrant, how are these folks gonna put a warrant out of together? If they just do the, the Smith Corner one, and present that for a warrant article of, say, $2,400, and you can't get the other residents in these other streets to jump on board the warrant article, then what are we gonna, what are we gonna have, a warrant article petition for the next six years to, in, in? A warrant article petition for the next six years to, in, complete all of these concerns? Because once you, my point is, here's my point, once you let the horse out of the barn, it's out of the barn.
Right, but would I, I don't know, the, I think there, I wouldn't think there'd be, and Mike probably knows better than I ever would, but I wouldn't think there'd be one every year from a different street. And if there is, you know, it's, it's basically put upon the people to get their own support. And if they don't get the support, that's the ultimate public opinion poll. And you might have, you know, you have situations, Smith Corner Road is not just the residents that would want it, but Willamian Drive people travel that road, Sergeant Woods people travel the road. So I, I, what you're saying, but I think we either have to take that approach, or we have to basically say, we're gonna, we're gonna put a strict policy, and the board is not going to approve, you know, line striping on any road unless it meets these dimensions, blah, blah, blah. And, and I guess the only other thing I would say is, somebody can put a petition warrant article for just about anything on the warrant. They don't need us to be involved. So, like I always.
No, 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 I mean, they don't, Matt, you're 100% correct. But I was trying to illustrate the point is, if they only put one together for Smith Corner Road, you know, it will open up the doors of the barn.
Yeah. Do you really think there'll be that many people who'll say, oh, they, they put one on for Smith Corner, so I'm gonna do one for Pond Street, and then you think we'd have that many?
Yeah, I do.
Well, I, I'm thinking that we.
I go.
Sorry, if I might just, I was just thinking that it may be to the board's benefit to draft our own warrant article for X amount of dollars, be it 45,000 or 60,000 or whatever, to do some roads, and then if that passes the following year, we can do another one to do some more roads, that kind of thing there. That way.
But your lines, you have to refresh your lines, lines every year.
And would it be the same cost every year, or is it just higher for the first time?
Same cost, same cost. Same cost. They don't care if they're going over black asphalt, or they're going over a yellow line that's faded.
Looking at it this way, you should just turn around and leave, for going for more money for something that's more important.
And well, then that's what I was saying, that's what I said, if I can get $14,000 added to my budget, boy, I have a whole bunch more places that I can use that, that in my job description is much more beneficial.
I agree.
All right, so does the board think then they want to say, and, and, you know, the resident who brought this to our attention was very reasonable in terms of, it was, I think it was meant to be information gathering for them, more than anything. So does the board want to kind of let this one lie where it is? We just, I, I guess there's a reason why small towns typically don't have a lot of roads that are line striped, you know? We just don't have a budget.
We wish we did.
Yeah, it all, listen, it all comes down to budget. There's, there's zero argument in any other direction, because, you know, it is a safety tool that's used for delineation. But if you don't have the money to, to maintain them, put them down and maintain them, then, you know, you just can't, you just can't do it.
Okay.
Mike, you don't have any, yeah, Mike, you don't have any kind of estimate what it would cost to bring that road up to grade, so that when you turn around and these people call you, you can say, look, the town's looking at 40, $50,000 to make the road wide enough so that we can put the stripes down, so they don't have money to do it.
I don't, I don't, I don't have that number. Can I do it during the season? I'll do my best to try to come up with that number. That's not, that's not an easy number to come up with, because.
I, I understand, Mike. I understand. At least you can turn around, and when they call you, someone calls you and say, why, why can't you do it? Then you've got an answer. It's not cost-effective right now.
Well, okay. I, my answer is already, it's not cost-effective. Whether it's, whether it's $14,000, $2,200, or $150,000. I mean, again, I've, I've told the selectmen the past two or three years, I've gone to the podium at the end of the year, and I've said, my budget is way too tight. It's just way, it's just way too tight. I mean, I haven't increased my budget. I've actually decreased my budget mostly from the request of the board of selectmen two and three years ago, but my budget has gone down over the past 13 years. My, my budget is less than it was 14 years ago. And that's almost, that's almost not doable, not almost not doable, it isn't doable.
It isn't doable, is right.
So I think, I think we're all pretty much aware now that this is a very tight set of formulas that, that get us what we have now, and it's, it's tough to play with.
No, and like I said, Matt, they have a legitimate request. I'm not, not saying their request is not founded.
Sure, yeah.
There's just not enough change in the piggy bank.
So is the board okay with letting this kind of go as is? We, we had Mike do his due diligence, which I think is the only thing we committed to. And now, no, it's not, not budgetarily reasonable, and, and we've learned, and now we're just gonna have to move on. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Mike. And can I say just one, one last thing, and I'm off. I think if you're gonna draft up the response to the, to the, I can't remember the gentleman's name, for Sergeant Woods.
Larry, yeah.
Larry, is it Larry? Okay. I would lean towards not making it complicated, and just say, based upon the width of Smith Corner Road in certain areas, it doesn't allow us to line stripe that road.
Diane's gonna reach out to you, and unless she's got it right now, she's gonna want that verbiage. But she looks like she's writing it down right now, so she might be okay. And she's on.
I'm okay, I have it recording anyway, so I will let, I'll send something to Larry and let him know.
All right, thank you. So we can do overlook drive, though, right? How much would that be?
Yeah. Listen, Matt, I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but you and I will be long gone by the time overlook drive ever sees a line.
Yeah, I know. I think that's, I think that's true. All right, well, thank you, Mike. I know you're, we don't have anything else for you, right? So we can probably let you go.
I think I'm good. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks.
You too.
All right. Mr. Conley, I don't think is working the Zoom thing. I think we need to give up, and we all have the slides, though, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, you guys, your call, I can walk you through it. This is more informational, more of an introduction than anything else, so however you want to do it, Matt.
I think we're okay, guys, right? So Diane's put them all out in the folder for us, and Mike can tell us the name of the file, and kind of say, next slide, and that sort of thing, and, and we can give him his chance. I will turn it over to Mike. It's Mike Conley, who is a resident of Newton, works for Usource Energy Advisors, and we kind of gave the board a preview via email, but I'll let you take the floor now, Mike, and tell us what you wanted to talk about with the board.
Sure. So, thank you, Matt, and I think I heard that Kate, Larry, Charlie, and Lisa are on, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And Diane, thank you for helping me get to this point, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Full disclosure, I'm a, I'm a resident, I am on the zoning board of appeals, so I'm here more for informational purposes, as I do work with several of the different towns close to us, and some of the larger cities, both in New Hampshire and across New England and New York. So some of you may or may not know this, but the utility, which is known as the provider of electricity or utility for gas, is an actual lagging indicator of what the energy markets are doing. So today, we're gonna start with a quick overview presentation of, of what Usource is, just so you know what we are, but really want to focus on thereafter, really on the, on the energy side of things. You should have one that says just overview presentation.
Yep, they do.
Okay, so we're gonna start with that first. We're just gonna hit a first couple slides, and then we're gonna skip down to the bottom, because some of those should have been cut out, because I used them in the next presentation, so I apologize. But Usource, so let's start with Usource. Usource was a company that was started over 20 years ago. It was incubated inside of Unitil. So the smallest traded utility company in the United States is Unitil. A year ago, Usource was acquired by Nextera. Nextera is the largest utility owned. They own Florida Power and Light, they own Jexa, and a few others. They're the largest producer of wind and solar in the world as well, and the largest owner of wind and solar. So very strong resources now behind Usource, over 700 clients in the Northeast. We're gonna be on page two of this presentation. The numbers, you know, they sound really good, 4 billion KWH, 11 billion cubic feet of gas, that's how they're measured. One is for electricity, which is KWH, and gas is measured in CF, which is cubic feet. We have a high retention rate, a lot of what you're gonna see in this industry now is a lot of low retention rate, unfortunately with COVID hitting the economy, especially some of our smaller clients that have been affected in the restaurant industry and other entertainment. We're gearing up to mitigate the risk of that type of situation. But basically, you have the right to going through a company like Usource and procure your energy, meaning the actual generation portion of the town's electric bill through what's called a third-party supplier. Let's go to page three of this presentation. Energy is procured, you can do it one of two ways. You can do it through the utility, which is, as I said earlier, a lagging indicator of the market. And a lot of people are just used to that because they understand the utility, and that's fine. You can also go through with a broker, an advisor, all going through to a supplier to get that for you. That does not mean that your electricity comes from a different source. It doesn't. It's kind of called, called hedging, out on Wall Street, that portion of your bill for a period of time. So Usource would do that, but you can also offset some of that stuff, as you're looking at this, through renewables, what's called a demand response, demand management, which is the ability to reduce load during peak hours, is a management program through the ISO. I'm not sure if you're large enough to qualify, but you should know about it, and through energy efficiency programs, hence lowering the number of KWHs that you use in a year. And so that's where Usource plays. We, we have all those resources, and have been doing this for a long period of time, that we can help you walk through and manage that process. Go to page four, and any questions, feel free to ask, I can stop at any time and answer them.
Charlie.
I gotta, I gotta step in. I gotta get off the line, man. My sister passed away.
Oh, sorry. Charlie.
Do what you have to do, and we'll, we'll talk to you later.
Okay, bye.
So sorry.
Thank you. All right, so that's too bad. We'll hear from Charlie, I'm sure, with details, but please proceed.
Yeah, and again, as questions come up, ask them, but if there's questions afterwards, I'm happy to address them publicly to the board, or if there's things you guys want to talk about, let me know. But basically, there's a, the, the thing that Usource prides itself on is to reduce costs, simplify the operations, because like anything out there, you know, I don't care what the profession is or what the industry is, goodness and bad, right? So integrity is kind of the model that we go by. We simplify how you do things. We, we can give you predictability in your rates, and we can manage risk over time. And that all comes together through the process, which I'll show you in a little bit. But it comes through a specific process that we go through when we have clients, to make sure that what they're actually getting into is what they, they think they're getting into to match their risk. So let's skip down, because some of the stuff we're gonna talk about in the next slide, let's skip down to slide seven, and this is the process that I want to talk about. The first thing we do is analyze, we take your bills and we bring them in, and I'm sure you have more than one bill in the town, and we look at them. And the first thing we do is verify usage and what's called a rate code. So every rate code has a different price per KWH. So we'll go through and validate to make sure that you're not being overcharged by the utility. This does commonly happen, so the first thing we do is do an analysis on the rate codes, and then on your data, and make sure it's fine. Then we sit down with you, we talk about a plan of action, right? What is the town's risk? What are you open to? How long you, do you think you want to go into the future? Here's what the market conditions are, here's what the market conditions are telling us, and we start looking at this from an analytical point of view. Based on the strategy we come up with, we execute during the time of period that we're under contract, we're constantly evaluating and giving you input as to what the markets are really doing. The markets will change on a day-to-day basis, potentially hour to hour, and we'll get into that, but there's a lot of factors that go into what causes the change of electrical markets in specifically what's called ISO New England. So the country's divided up into what's called ISO, Independent System Operators. New York has one, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland have one. We have one. We're all disconnected from each other, but should there be an emergency, we can connect to each other and push energy throughout the country where it need be, so that there is no blackouts or brownouts that are happening. So it can become very complicated. I'm gonna kind of stay high-level, but happy to dig in where you think you'd like to. So at this point, before I go any further, I'm gonna skip down to the number 15. These are who we serve, I'm again giving a high-level overview of Usource. We do have manufacturers, city towns, education, hospitals. There are some of the customers that we are actively engaged with, also, so it's not that we're just a, you know, a small company fly-by-night. And then, of course, the next slide is energy experts. So Scott McDonald, Tom Dyer drives the educational resources behind, meaning gathering the data that gets pumped into the analysts every day to understand the market conditions and what's going on. And here's some of our advisors, Maureen Conley, Maureen Callahan, Bronn Appleton, Shannon Davis, they're the tenured folks on the team. I'm back in the industry, I spent some time last four years outside of the industry, but my background comes from being with a supplier and doing energy efficiency as well as solar. So that's Usource, in a nutshell, kind of our high-level capabilities. Are there any questions on that? Are there any questions on that? Everybody follow it good? Okay. So let's switch over to the next, next deck.
I'm sorry, Mike, I was on mute, but I was just going to ask. So you've, you said earlier, you've done some surrounding towns in this. Are you able to share with, with us what towns they are?
More than I'm actively working and I'm able to share is Fremont. I would have to actually, because they knew I was doing this tonight. So for me to disclose, I'd have to go and get permission. We kind of keep that confidential.
That's fine. I was just curious if you, but you don't have to go any further than that. Thank you.
Yep. So energy, let's talk, let's talk what energy is. So on everybody's bill, whether it be at your home or at a commercial or town or anywhere, that bill gets confusing, but it's kind of divided into two separate parts. One is the generation part. And that's the part that we're talking about, that you can go to third-party supply. The other part is what's called transmission and distribution. That's TND, also known as the poles and wires. That portion of the bill, no matter who tells you anything, has to go through the utility. They are mandated in their laws around how they react if a pole goes down, a wire goes down, or electrical outage. Or if you've seen it in the news, when the storms start to hit the Northeast, there are certain protocols that have to be enacted. Nobody other than utility can play with that portion of the bill. And that portion of the bill is separate in the money that's collected. It must go back to the poles, the wires and the programs to make sure that there is reliability built into the grid system. So let's talk about generation, because this is going to be where we'll spend a little bit of time. Slide number three. So slide number three talks about the different types of what we call load factors or producers inside the grid. And when I say the grid, ISO New England, so I'm going to keep it with the New England. So you have a base load. You have your intermediate load and you have what's called peaking or peekers. So your base load would be somebody like Seabrook, who when it shuts down takes 72-plus hours to turn it back on safely. So even if it's only running at 10% or 15%, 24 hours a day, they're going to keep that running so that they can make sure that when they need to ramp up major power, they can ramp it up. Intermediate load and part of your base load will be anything that's considered renewable energy, solar or wind. And ISO needs to adjust based on what the grid's needs are and what those are producing to offset, to make sure that there's enough power in the grid. But yes, ISO New England is looking at this grid 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and predicting what is needed in the, not only day-ahead hours, but the hour-ahead hour to make sure that they're keeping up. And then you have your peaking load, which is typically a natural gas fired because those things from cold start to start up and be blasting at full can take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. So the reason why I say this, if you think about the grid, think about usage, everybody gets up in the morning, or they used to get up in the morning and leave their house. And then they'd show up at work and start working while power still gets generated at the house where you work. And what you do, it may differ, but in the morning hour between six and seven, you can actually watch resources in the grid and the power going up. And so that's where your base load goes to its capacity. You start turning on your intermediate. And depending on the load shape and what's needed, you'd bring it to your peekers and your peekers would make sure that you have enough power on, in the grid, making sure that everybody, when they turn their lights on, it's on when they need it. And in the evening, as the grid power starts to come down and first and second shift has started to go, people go home, they start turning lights off and going to bed. You bring it back down through your intermediate back to your base load. And that's called your off-hour, off-hour period from 11 o'clock at night till 6 o'clock in the morning. So when you start to hear about some terms, I just want you to understand there's a method to what gets generated, why it gets generated. And that created the generational portion of your market because this is how these guys get paid off of that supply side of your bill. Okay? Let's go to the next slide, slide four. This is what most people will be used to based at their house. And I would imagine as a municipality, this is what you'd be used to, which is called a fixed-price product. So when you see a KWH charge, you see a price and you pay that price on the generational portion and that's fixed with all your other different ancillary charges built in. What you don't see on your bill are the ancillary charges, things like a capacity tag, renewable portfolio standard, SREC 1, SRES 2. All these technical terms, but it's part of what makes up that KWH price. And when it comes back to utility, they have to pay portions of what you used out to the renewable portfolio standard to make sure that New England's meeting its obligations to a program called Reliability Must Run, which is always having assets or generators sitting, waiting, ready to ramp up in case, one, they have a problem with another generator that goes offline, or two, if they need to bring them into the peak or intermediate load. So there's programs and assets being paid based off of those ancillary charges that you will never see unless you want to move to a different product. So let's go to what's called slide five. And this is what's called an index product. So an index product allows you to ride the real-time market. So depending on what the market's going to do, and we're going to go into some slides and show this. The real-time market, day-ahead or in the hour-ahead market, basically it's an auction every day for the day-ahead hour that you're going to use that power. And all you're doing is paying a service charge to ride that market. Typically in a high market, big manufacturers will jump on this because as the market goes up, they believe it's going to come down. They'll ride the market down and not get stuck in with a high fixed product price over a long period of time. The products that we're talking about, you can go on for a year, two years, three years. Right now, no more than four years because there's too much risk and unknown in the future. So it's limited, but it's open up to five to seven years at times in the market as well. So this would be considered another product that you could take a look at. Go to slide number six, which is a block price product. This is something I don't expect a town, but just know that you can, you can, if you had a large enough load or usage, you could purchase what's called a block of power. You've committed to using so much power during the day and during the year, it's probably some of the cheapest pricing you'll get out there. But whether you use it or not, you're paying for it and the utility doesn't allow any forgiveness in that because they're going to be prepared to give it to you whether you use it or not. You're taking all the risk in this. So I'm going to leave that one alone because that gets really complicated and I don't think you're using enough power to really take value in that. But I want to make sure education-wise, you're aware of it. Slide number seven. These list out all the different types of ancillary charges that are inside of that fixed-price product that I'm almost positive the town would be on. So when you see that fixed-price KWH, this breaks out all the different charges that need to be accounted for and go to the different programs. And what I'm going to skip over, so the next one is pass-through versus lock. You can, you can look at this. You can pass through those ancillaries if you want. You're open up to the market and the risks if they change, or you can lock them in. Something that we can get detailed into during an analysis discussion, but know that those are options out there. Let's go to slide number nine. This is the one I kind of wanted to really show you. So this is a historical look-back chart. There's some other charts that I sent you that are similar to this in a separate package because they were updated as of last Friday. So you'll see a little bit more detail into 2020. But here's the important thing and why to analyze the market and work with somebody that you feel comfortable with. The market change is based on a lot of different conditions. Every Monday, I get from our, there's 15 suppliers in New England. They will all send you their research. We also do our own research. I get the weather chart. It tells me what's going to happen the next five to six days. It tells me six to 11 days and 11 to 20 days out, it comes from NOAA. We analyze that data because weather has a major impact on what's happening when you generate electricity. 60% of what is being generated in New England right now is natural gas. And that's typically what's helping set the price. But also other things come into, come into play. So you'll see I highlighted things like Katrina hit the U.S. in 2005 and because of that, we saw a spike in cost. And we saw a spike in natural gas. So 60% of what's being produced, 60% of what's being generated in New England is, comes from natural gas. It's going to affect the real-time pricing of gas. 2008 to 2009, we saw a huge, I mean, it was spiking up there. The economy was rolling along and then we saw a financial bubble hit. Okay, supply and demand. Now that crushed the market as far as cost. If you were still in business doing businesses, the prices were coming down, you're alleviating your costs and taking advantage of market conditions. 2014, there was a jump on the cap tag speculation. That's an ancillary. That's a program put together by the ISO that is called a look-back program. It looks back, believe it or not, at the, so on December 31st, it's not really done December 31st, but technically from December 31st, sometime in January and February, they look back across the previous year. So in 20, January of 2019, they analyzed 2018 and they go to the peak day on the system, for what the system was doing on the peak day during the peak hour and look at the entire usage of the system. And then they go back and they take every individual meter and figure out what they were doing and they tag it with what's called the cap tag. And whatever you're using that day, you get charged, that capacity charge, 1.3, no, 1.2 something percent. 1.25 times what you were using. So they give you a little buffer to make sure that next year, if you're using a little bit more, they can cover that and they have the cost to do that. So during that period of time in 2014, you'll see a little bit of spike going in the beginning because they weren't sure whether that was going to change and go up. And there was a lot of speculation what the ISO was going to do. So we saw a jump in energy prices based on that alone. And then that didn't come to fruition and it started to go down. And then, of course, right now, we're all predicting 2020. Well, I should say 2015 into 16, you saw a warm winter, warm winter oversupply. You're seeing it get in 2020, a warm winter, an oversupply. And then you had Abu Dhabi and Russia fighting and trying to overproduce and outdo each other. Well, now you've got an United States that's packed with storage for natural gas, were oversupplied. They're bringing in the rigs, they're shutting rigs down, they're shutting exploration down. You're seeing energy prices right now, they just in March hit a 15-year all-time low. They're still crawling around the bottom. But everybody that is doing exploration and producing is doing everything in their power to try to get the prices back up so that they can make money because they're upside down. And what also happened to hit us was an economic problem with the, the virus that hit the United, well, it was a world virus that hit. So this is why studying the market is so important to understand what's going on and what can be done to help a client out. During conditions today, I would tell you there is very little upside, sorry, downside risk to doing something in an open market because we're still bouncing around a bottom that's not at a 15-year low, but it's close to a 10-year low. So all those conditions come into play when we're taking a look at, at what to do and how to advise clients moving forward to minimize risk and also take advantage of low cost. Because remember, your utility, I always say, is a lagging indicator because your utility needs to secure its power, go to the wholesale market, purchase it on the, on the market, the wholesale market, wrap it up and tell you, depending on the state and utility, X amount of days ahead of that rate change. Typically, on average, most utilities are 60 days out of the market. So they bought 60 days prior to putting it into effect. And that's why it's considered a lagging indicator because if the market's going down, then you're getting stuck with higher prices. But if it's going up, it's lagging a little bit, but then catching up. So finally, other things to consider will be the last slide on this. And I'm happy to answer questions. I hope I haven't confused anybody too much. But that's why I wanted to bring this to your attention, is it can be confusing, but it can be, it can be unwound and simply explained, especially if we were more face-to-face, because I'd have a whiteboard diagramming thing for you folks. You look at the first top piece. 15 years ago, it was simple, right? Cost equal, it was a simple math equation. Cost equals the KW usage times the price you paid or took from the utility over time. Very simple. Every day, the more you use, the price changes, but it's over time that gets your cost. Today, this is what people are getting their heads with, all the different programs that are out there. Energy efficiency, the lighting, the HVAC, you name it. It becomes basically a much more complicated equation based on what you are looking to do and how you are looking to reduce the usage of your energy. I know that the school system has looked at solar, Sanborn Regional. I'm not sure that they're going to move forward with it. I don't know if the town has an appetite for that or energy efficiency or lighting upgrades where they can take advantage of some rebates from, from the utility. But all that would play into the amount or volume that you would use in order to reduce your usage and reduce your overall cost and then manage your supply side to make sure that you're not being overcharged in the market. What questions do we have?
So Mike, I think, I think as you said, this is informational for us in terms of our, our next point of decision-making, which I think those on the phone, on the board and stuff, you can correct me. We're under contract now until, is it two more years under the current contract?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think it was two more years.
So we have, this is basically informational for the fact that as we do with other things in town, we look for multiple quotes to make a decision. This is, this is another place we could go to to kind of take a look at what our options are rather than just plugging in with whatever's available. Because I think last time, we only got the one, sort of the one response, right? To our... only got the one, sort of the one response, right, to our, is that, am I remembering?
No, we went with the collaborative.
For the towns?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Rock and, yeah.
Correct, with RPC.
Yeah. So this is a, this is another consideration as we go along.
No, that's fine, and so in consideration, that's called an aggregation, and I don't know everybody in the, in the, in the collaborative, but there's some pros and cons to aggregations. So we should, you should, should make sure that your, your load, so it's called a load factor, and if I don't, and I would, there's no way of guessing this, so I apologize, I can't say anything pro or con to this, until you take a look at the utility bills, you put them into the system, and you look at the load factors. But typically, if somebody's got a bad load factor, and somebody's got a good load factor, well, that good load factor is benefiting the bad load factor, because you're all aggregated together. You just want to be aware of some of those things when you're looking at an aggregation.
So I, I think what we need to do is, we need to somehow, on our calendar, keep, keep track of this for when our next point of decision-making comes up, we can start crunching some of these numbers.
Yeah, and the fact that you guys know what's out there and doing something, that's good, I wasn't sure what was, that was, so I'm glad to see that we're doing something. But as a town member, I'm here to also put you source aside, be, be a resource as well.
Yeah, excellent. Is there, anybody have any questions from Mike? So we kind of, we know where Mike, so if we have any questions, we know how to find them, but I, I appreciate you coming on and giving us this informational presentation, because I think this will help down the road, no matter what we do, I think it'll help save the town money now that we know this.
Yeah, and as you get closer, we can do a refresh on this stuff.
Yeah.
And we kind of talk about at that time, I don't, you know, if it's two years, I can't predict what things are going to look like in two years, hopefully a lot better when, you know, for people back to work and things like that. But it's hard, the energy market, things may change, and you always want to remember, different programs, different ancillary service come into play, you want to make sure you understand that as well. So feel free to reach out if there's some things I can do to educate you as you move down the line.
All right, excellent. All right, we, we appreciate you coming on with us, and we're sorry about the technical difficulties, but I think we were still able to get through all the slides, which was great.
Yeah, totally good, I appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much, and we'll talk soon, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
You as well, bye now.
See you, bye. All right, so switching gears, I, I just got to pull my agenda back up, but just in terms of what's on the agenda, what's scheduled on the agenda, I think G, review commercial trash hauler Sunday drop-off, so I think in a nutshell, that was, whatever that was a month ago, we talked about, and I think Steve Saints here calls his company Newton Trash Service or something like that.
I think it's Newton Waste Management.
Newton Waste Management, so we were giving him kind of an experimental chance to go on, was it Saturdays at that point?
Sundays.
Sundays.
Sundays, so we heard back from Pete, we asked Pete to, to get back to us, by this time, rather than having Pete attend the meeting, Pete basically got back to us saying that all is going well with the extension of Sunday service for him, he's being very cooperative, and he's not getting in the way, there's none of the backup that we were concerned about. So I think basically, my recommendation to the board is, we just kind of keep on keeping on this way, and ask Pete to let us know if there's any issues, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay?
I'm good.
Excellent, so we'll move off of this one. Diane, you'll kind of let Pete know that, that we just want him to keep, keep checking.
Yep.
Great, and, all right, so we have H, which is the acceptance of cash donations for Greeny Playground.
Do we make a motion, or how do we?
Yeah, so I moved to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from Charlotte Sentner in the amount of thirty dollars.
Get a second on that?
Second, thank you.
Seconded by Kate with a thank you, and we'll go around, Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, Lisa the next one?
I moved to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from James Marino in the amount of fifty dollars.
Second.
Second.
All right, so let's go around, we'll call Kate the second, so Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous, did you have another one for Greeny Park, please?
We have, I, I don't know what the amount.
Can I speak on this one?
Sure.
I checked with the auditors, you, you were discussing a couple of meetings ago about the nine thousand dollars that the committee had collected, and that they would probably be giving that to the town to help pay for some of the invoices.
Right.
I was informed by the auditors that you can accept the donation, because it's under ten thousand, at a public meeting on the agenda, without having a public hearing and putting it in the newspaper, and they even said that you can put that nine thousand into the revolving fund that Recreation has until you're ready to spend it.
Perfect.
Good, so I don't think we're there yet, but at least now we know what.
Right, right.
So, thank you for getting that.
You're welcome.
Clearance, okay, so I think we've done everything under schedule, but now under other business, I want to just go there, I think we have a resident on who wanted to be added to the agenda, is that correct, Diane?
Aye, yeah, well, I don't know if she wanted to be added, but Diane, not sure what she wants to talk about. Dolly, if you want to unmute, star six.
I knew when things started to become a big deal, we sort of just hunted down.
I think she got tired of waiting.
She's, she's actually on video, it looks like, could actually, yeah, unmute or share video.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, did you guys get my letter?
Yes.
Um, I was like the dog put down, and I feel like this happened like three times, and the dog is still alive, and this time, he killed my dog, and I want to know what I can do to get this dog to be put down.
Have you contacted the animal control officer?
It's, it's a work in progress, the animal control officer knows, the chief knows, and who is it, the guy that's the head of like the SPCA for the state? I, I, I let everyone know that I could think of, try to help me out to get this dog put down, and I heard that the guy, the owner took the dog up to Keen, some farm, and I thought that the dog needed to be quarantined for fourteen, fourteen days. Why is he leaving the town?
Yeah, I think, I think speaking to the board, the board will tell me if I'm not speaking correctly, we, we obviously feel for you in this situation, I read the letter, it's just awful. However, this is a, a police matter, in where, we're the town board for the town's prudential affairs, but I don't think, I don't believe we have any, to do anything to help you situation.
What would have happened if it was a kid?
Again, that would have been a criminal matter with the police department?
Would have been a homicide.
So, so there is no rules in, in Newton about putting the dog down, the, the dog has a taste for blood. I don't, I mean, personally, I thought, I thought it should have been put down right away, and I feel like somebody's dragging their feet, and I, I just want to know about rules.
I think, I think what, I think what you're talking about is laws, and you're talking about state laws, and it sounds like you're already talking to the right people from what you described.
Right, so I guess, I guess my, my concern was if there was anything you guys could do to help me out.
I, I think if you, if, if you're already talking to the police, then I, that is all we could offer to help you out, other than our, our, you know, we, our sympathy, all we can offer you is, is the police help, and it sounds like you've already got that.
Right.
Sorry, two more.
I wish there was more we could do, but it doesn't seem to be the case, it's just terrible.
It was, they, Larry Foot, son-in-law, was there, the whole neighborhood was there, they all saw what happened, and I'm just surprised that there's nothing the town could do.
Well, isn't it in process now, though, with the proper people?
Yes, yes.
So you're still waiting for action, right?
Yes, but I figured I would like, take steps, I, I'm just, I just guess I wanted everybody to know what happened to the dog, and to see if, what I can do to get the dog put down.
Yeah, because it is a public safety issue, just not.
Yes, it is, because from what I understand, he's attacked his neighbor's dog, another dog, and he kills raccoons, and he's got blood in his mouth, he's got that taste, and he's not going to stop.
And public safety is police, right, Matt?
Yes, correct.
So the thing is, that is the board, that is the one with the authority with public safety.
Yeah.
Okay.
But at least.
All right, I just thought I would try.
Yeah, let us know in public, it's a public meeting, so people will be aware of the situation.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very, very sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's terrifying.
Yes.
All right.
All right, you guys have a nice evening.
You too, thanks. I'm going to move on down to, unless we have other, other business, I was going to go down to the manifest.
Do you have other, Matt?
No, what's that?
Do you have other with your letters?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would just say that, I kind, I think it was almost two weeks ago, two weeks ago Friday, that several residents all got together, all volunteers, nobody getting paid, everybody having a lot of other things they could have been doing that day, got together at the town beach, spread new sand, which residents have been asking for forever, they cleaned up twigs, leaves, all that stuff, must have had close to ten volunteers. We did a, an excellent job, if you've been down to the beach, it looks like a brand-new beach. So we wanted to give them our thanks, is really all we can do for them at this point, so we want to send a letter on behalf of the board, so, to these residents, and so I want to move that the board allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board, letters of thanks to the, to the beach cleanup volunteers.
I second that.
Seconded by Lisa, let's do a roll call vote, Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, so, yeah, thank you, Nancy, for reminding me of that one. Anything else on the other?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did we get finalized information on the ice cream cones yet?
I was going to ask you the same thing, do you have an invoice?
I got the invoice, I believe it's on this manifest, but, and I gave them the list, but you, you guys were supposed to, how do they approach, do they have an ID, or?
Yeah, so let me do this, so we need to pick a date range, but basically, let me let the cat out of the bag, just really quick, the Board of Selectmen sat down, and we wanted to come up with an idea to thank all of our employees in a small way for all the work they've done throughout COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. So what we've done is, we've set up a thing with Hodges Ice Cream, everybody knows Hodges and Merrimack, it's the Merrimack location, that all of our employees on a given set of dates, which we're going to figure out now, on a given set of dates, you can go there, tell them your name, they'll check off that you work for the town of Newton, and they will give you a free ice cream as a token of thanks from the Board of Selectmen for all the work that you've done. So I don't think it's, needs to be any more complicated than that, other than say, you give them your name, and they're going to have a roster to check off, so.
What size?
What's that?
What size?
It's just small, I believe, right?
What a kitty, what a kitty.
Kitty, which, if anybody knows Hodges, that's fun, so.
Can I have my sprinkle on it?
Yes.
Sprinkles are extra, so, I'm joking, sprinkles are, aren't easy to throw in. So we'll get the official word out to all the town employees about that, but I wanted to ask the board, do we want to set a date range for folks to do this, so they have plenty of time, you know, they don't have to all show up one day, what are you guys thinking?
Yeah, I agree.
A big date range, like a month or two.
Why don't you do it?
Not two months, that's too long, I think.
Long, till September.
No, no.
No.
I, I'm actually thinking July 1st through July 15th.
I like that idea.
Or do we want to do it sooner than that, because I'm looking at the date, it's, it's two weeks away.
Not effectively now till the 15th.
Because you want to give the employees and the opportunity to hear about it.
Right, but I'm saying, still till July 15th, but effective sooner than.
I, I like the idea of a ten to fourteen-day period.
I, I like ten to fourteen days, so let's start.
I like three months.
Let's, okay, so.
You can only get it once, Kate.
I know, you know, some people may not be comfortable going to out yet.
Hodges will be closed.
Everybody's open now.
It doesn't mean you should.
Right, so you can get takeout, curbside, I think.
In your suit.
So why don't we start?
I, I would say from, how about from the 19th to the 6th? That would give us the 4th of July weekend.
So, Larry?
Later, because we need, like you said, you need more time, I like the 15th as an end date, because sometimes it takes a while for them to find out about it, I prefer one to 15.
Larry, what do you think?
Yeah, it don't matter, one to 15 is fine.
So, let's do, what'd you say, Lisa, to begin with, in 19?
I, I said from July 1st to the 15th, was my first thought, and then I said from June 19th to the 6th.
I would do.
We wanted to do it sooner.
June 19th, July 15th.
Why don't you ask somebody who's going to get one?
Yes, yeah.
Oh gee.
Well, we can get one too.
All right, so I want to go this weekend, because it's going to be very hot.
Exactly, that's why I said the 19th.
I want June 19th to July 15th, because Cheryl's on vacation in some of those weeks.
Yes.
Who's on vacation some of those weeks?
Cheryl.
Some of those weeks, not all of those weeks, right?
No. No, there's no, what harm is there?
But she's on vacation, so.
Just what harm is there to extending it from the 19th and 15th, there's none.
Okay, so let's, if, let's do a, I'm totally going off of Robert's Rules of Order, but 19th to the 15th, good, everybody?
Second.
If you're not. So Nancy, would you mind recent, reaching out to Jason to make sure that long of a period is okay?
So June 19th to July 15th.
How about to the 12th, which is the Sunday? It's kind of like the end of the week.
You can't get a Sunday, it's only a quarter kitty. The 12th, 19th to the 12th.
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure he's, he's going to be all right managing that roster for that long.
Agreed.
Person be back by then, who's it Cheryl who's going away? Will they be back?
And that also, um, would involve then determining whether or not we're going to pay him, whether he's going to submit, submit a bill once a week or carry it for the practical month.
I think we have the full amount on this manifest.
And what's the proof? They just show their what, what do we show, IDs?
Yeah, but what happens if we overpay? Is he giving you a refund?
That was the question, but we didn't get an answer.
Well, we need an answer.
Well, that's your decision.
So, so that number, what we're paying is based on 100 employees.
Right, you may not get 100 to go.
Do we, are we concerned about this?
It's quite possible.
I'm not concerned about this.
Well, if we overpay, why don't we then just get whatever before it ends, the extra, and bring it to the woman who's the town hall or something, so it doesn't go to waste.
Diane, I like that.
So we don't waste any money and if people don't want it, certainly you guys are working intensely, constantly. I think you should have any overage.
We have a freezer.
And then. So nothing will go to waste.
Since I'm looking at the clock and it's 9:10 and we're still talking about ice cream.
Yeah, I, I, I'm good with the idea that whatever is not used by employees going for their ice cream gets, uh, applied towards ice cream that can then be put in the freezer for the employees.
So, so Nancy, if, if you could, uh, talk with him on that, I don't think that'll be a big deal because he has a roster, so he'll know his numbers, right?
Okay.
Well, does he have everyone's name? Is that how it works?
Yeah.
What happens if there are, you know, unethical people who hear about this and use?
He's checking off a list.
He's going to check.
Oh, IDs, with IDs, okay, then we're fine.
Well.
Yeah, a license or a town ID, I don't know.
Um, I hope we don't have ice cream bandits working for us. We have bigger problems.
Well, you know what happened, but it's another story.
So Matt, just, just a clarification, it's Amesbury, not Merrimack.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I always say Merrimack.
Oh my God.
It's right there here.
Yeah, uh, it's on the Merrimack line, basically.
Yep.
So, all right, good, so we can stop talking about ice cream?
Yep.
Maybe.
All right, so, uh, I'll talk with Nancy about the, we'll have the official announcement for everybody.
Okay.
But if people are reading this right now, I hope you're not in your car driving there right now.
Yeah, right.
They're closed, but.
And observe social distancing when you're there.
They have ice cream cones on the pavement.
Yeah, tech, we went the other night, it's very simple.
Yeah.
Okay, and everyone's being good, good.
Yep.
All right, uh, what's next?
Think your manifest.
Lisa?
Have that handy?
Uh, one second, I will. All right, so I do not have that handy, but I will in a moment. I'm still on U Source documents here. There we go.
You got it?
Yeah, as soon as it opens up. Other things we're getting in my way. All right, so I will move to sign vendor manifest dated June 16, 2020 in the amount of $141,000, hey? What was I just, yes, 40, sorry, it redisplayed. $141,499, yeah, $141,499.1 of which $70,487.50 is for the annual fire rescue bond payment.
Second.
All right, um, let's vote. Uh, Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
All right, I move to sign cable vendor manifest dated June 16, 2020 in the amount of $11,376.0 cents.
Second.
Seconded by Larry, let's go around. Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, unanimous.
I move to sign police special detail vendor manifest dated June 16, 2020 in the amount of $464.90.
Seconded by Larry, let's vote. Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to sign highway vendor manifest dated June 16, 2020 in the amount of $3,900.0 cents.
Get a second on you?
Second.
Seconded by Larry, let's vote. Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
All right, I would like to announce that the board signed the payroll manifest for pay period May 24 through June 6, 2020, with a pay date of June 11, 2020 on June 9, 2020.
Second.
That's just an announcement, right?
Correct, that is just an announcement. I do have one more motion for an appointment.
Shoot.
Okay, upon recommendation from the Gale Library Trustees, move to appoint Amanda Smart as an alternate library trustee for the year 2020 through 21, term to expire March 31, 2021.
Second, all right, congrats.
Okay, and I, uh, we always talk about these, are we, we're not really voting as much as voting to accept, right?
Correct.
Correct.
It's their appointment.
We're doing the appointing based on their recommendation.
Right.
So Diane's got that captured, so Kate's the second, uh, let's vote. Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. All right, that's it.
That's all I got on other.
So we're going, what's that?
I said that's all I have under other.
I'm sorry, I thought somebody else said something. So let's, uh, do approval of the minutes if we could. Somebody want to take those?
It's the public, non-public for.
I move to accept the Selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated June 8, 2020.
Second.
Seconded by Kate, uh, let's go around. Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, somebody want to take the June 10th?
I move to accept the public meeting minutes dated June 10, 2020.
Second.
Seconded by Larry, let's vote. Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. So now the next thing is review non-public session minutes for unsealing. So Larry, this is where you come in. I know Larry, I know Charlie had to drop off, but Larry, did you want to talk about what you mentioned earlier?
Well, that was really Charlie's question, um, so it's probably too late for him to get back. It was, it was on how we are, I guess he wanted to read something and I don't remember who told him or what he said, that they were sealed, that he couldn't read them.
Correct.
That is correct, however, the board can make a decision to unseal all or part of sealed minutes if there is no longer a need to keep it sealed, just like when we moved, we came out of non-public, except to announce.
Right, but that was more his question, uh, not mine, so.
Yeah, but now it'll be in the minutes, the answer.
Right.
Okay.
So this is, this is something we carry on every, uh, normal agenda. Uh, so you can, Charlie do, Charlie will hopefully read these minutes and when he comes back in two weeks or whatever, uh, he can bring this up during this part of the, the meeting, if he wants.
He may have to bring it up in non-public first, Matt, in order for us to know what it is he wants to unseal before we can, so we'll have to vote in, um, we may have to do this and not, definitely have to do it in non-public to make sure it's worthy of unsealing.
Yeah, so we'll cross that bridge then, but that's a good point. All right, anything else for, uh, this board?
Just a quick question, did you sign those letters today yet?
I have not today yet and I want.
Okay, well, you can just text me when you do and I'll go down and get them in the mail.
I will, thank you.
Okay.
I figure, I figure I might wait because somebody's going to put a lease on that table too, right? Uh, for the.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Let me know when that's there and I'll do them all.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is that it?
I think so.
Did I get a most?
I moved to adjourn at 9:20 PM.
Is it still Tuesday?
I hope so.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, right, um.
There's no roll call on this one, we're done.
Exactly, everybody have a good night. We'll, uh, tomorrow night, Wednesday, 6:00 PM, same Zoom as.
Right.
For the meeting.
Be there, be square.
Exactly, have a good night, everybody.
You too.